Go ahead and get started. All right, we were talking and I missed time there. So, so this is our regularly scheduled public meeting, August 12th, 2025, 10:00 AM. We do encourage everybody to participate. Those that know, we do have a Teams link on this meeting for those that aren't aware. You can get that off of our website, but please make sure you put in your Teams, your name, your username, which is your first and last name for admittance into this meeting. That's what we're going to be looking for to make sure that we know who's in the meeting. But also to help us know who we'll be communicating with on the other side if you are there. We do encourage everybody to partake in these virtually or in person, but if you would like to speak during the meeting and you are using Teams, please be sure to use the raise your hand function. Under the reactions tab and the chair will unmute you. So luckily we've got a really fantastic IT team that's here to help us. Get through all of this stuff because it's always a, it's always a fun adventure sometimes, but thanks to those guys to help make this possible so that we can be. Open and transparent with the public and allows many opportunities to participate as we can. So. Thank you to them for being a part of this. So the first item up for business is to call this meeting to order. Next I would ask that we stand and please recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands on a nation under God and is with liberty and is just as strong.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, next item up for business is the approval of the previous meeting minutes dated July 29th, 2025, August 1st, 2025, and also August 1st, 2025, our special meeting, sir.
I'll move item number three.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments, concerns with the meeting minutes? Okay. Uh, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, item number four, I would seek approval for today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item number five, I would seek consent for the, or seek approval for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move item number five.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or comments on our consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, um, as Chairwoman Conrad has said, Conrad has said before, this is always a great opportunity for us to recognize. The employees that have worked for Webster County and have dedicated a lot of time and energy and resources. Into our counties. So we just want to take a minute here to recognize them. Um, so up first would be Brenda Engstrom, 31 years with Webster County and Treasurer's Office. Rodney Ware, oof, Rodney Wareheim, 26 years, secondary roads. Carolyn Clark, 20 years, Treasurer's Office. Michael Kenyon, 19 years, Sheriff's Office. Chad Hicks, 16 years, secondary roads. Natasha West, 12 years, Conservation Office. Uh, Beth Albright, nine years, Health Department. Courtney Balkanendi, nine years, Recorder's Office. Nathan McSprain, IT Department. Madeline Richardson, six years on the jail or in the jail, Sheriff's Office. There we go. Brianna Case, five years with the Health Department. Matthew Burns, four years with the Sheriff's Office. Kevin Cruzey, three years with the jail. Lisa Hanson, uh, two years with the Health Department. Donald Cry, uh, two years with secondary roads. Stephanie Hengina, I'm gonna probably butcher that. Uh, two years with the Health Department and then Julie Wilson, uh, one year with the County Attorney's Office. So that being said, I just want to say thank you to, to all these employees. It's, it's these folks that really help, uh, keep this county going, keep us moving forward. And we talk about the, the we in Webster County. These are the folks that help, uh. Are the glue to help keep all this together for us. So I very much appreciate them and all their service to Webster County. So, thank you. Uh, next up, I would seek to approve and authorize the suspension of 2024 property taxes. In the amount of $54 for Bruce Larson, 1338, Third Avenue Northwest, number 115, Fort Dodge, Iowa, 50501. Per the recommendation from the Iowa Department of Human Services eligible under Iowa code 427.9.
I'll move item seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments on item number seven? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve and authorize the chair to sign grant agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, Conservation Service.
Chair, so moved.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? Mr. Joel?
Jamie Joel, County Engineer. Uh, this is an emergency watershed protection grant from the NRCS to, uh. The main portion of the project is some string bank repairs on McGuire Bend Road. Down in southeast of Lehigh. So it's about just under $425,000 grant.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Joel or in general? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next, I would seek to approve a resolution 2025-35, supporting a traffic safety improvement grant application.
Chair, I'll move item number nine.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, Mr. Joel?
Uh, this is a grant application, uh, to ask for funding for a changeable message sign from the DOT. So if we are awarded the grant, uh, pay for a hundred percent of the cost.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Joel?
What is the total cost of the grant?
Um, I think it's about 42,000. I can get you the exact number if you want.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
So do I.
Cochran, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Uh, let the record reflect that it was all ayes from the board. Uh, next would be, uh, to approve and authorize chair to sign a quote, uh, 126,422.60. For replacement, uh, virtualization environment for data center per Andy McGill, uh, Webster County MIS GIS Director.
I'll move item number 10.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Good morning. Um, Andrew McGill, Webster County IT and GIS Director. Uh, so we, uh. Are dealing with an issue where our infrastructure is aging. We have gotten our life expectancy out of it plus. Our servers for this environment were, are going on. We got bottom back in 2017. So, um, getting, uh, warranties for them anymore. Uh, they're basically they're in their life. Um, our storage server, which handles all our data is end of warrant, or end of life too. Um, they only give us six more months to get off of it actually to, to, to support it. So, uh, with that, knowing that, we set out and, uh, sent out requests for quotes from, uh, three different vendors. One of them being, uh, Harlem Business Systems, another one being Data Vision, and another one was Scale. Uh, Scale is S H I actually. And we asked, you know, we give them the criteria that we wanted, the amount of storage we wanted, the CPUs, the amount of RAM we wanted per host. And came back with three, three different quotes. Um, now unfortunately, we can't have three of the same product. In IT world, the way these vendors work is, um, they, whoever submits the request first, that's who gets the best pricing. And so if, if another vendor would try submit, they will not get the same pricing. And, and so unfortunately, there are three different types of systems. But they all do the, they do the exact same thing. So, uh, with that being said, uh, the, the Data Vision quote was 180,000 and $604.39. The HBS quote, our Harlem Business System was 149, 768, 61. And then scale quote was 129, or 100, excuse me, 126, 422, 60. So with that being said, um, we went through the process of looking at the different types of systems we had. Joe and I sat in on, on demos and, and looked at what was going to change for our environment. And we ended up going with scale, which is completely different virtualization product than what we, what we currently have. But I don't know, for those of you that are a little bit IT technical, you've heard a lot about Broadcom and the costs have gone up significantly. So our licensing would have gone up significantly too. So we had, we had to make a choice. We could have stayed with VMware is what we have now. But, um, it, the cost would have been increasing as, as years go on. So. We decided to go a different route and scale. Um, and so that's what we presented to you today. You have any questions? This is a one-time payment for three years and then we will, there'll be maintenance costs. We, it's not a lease. It is, we are buying the equipment. And then after three years, there will be, uh, maintenance costs from that point on until we decide to renew again or to replace.
Are there any other annual fees associated with that then?
For the first three years, none. So this is, so this will replace our VMware licensing cost, which is going to be anywhere from. I think 30 to 40,000. So it's going to increase by almost 20,000. Our, our storage server cost, which is going to be around, was going to be around 20, 25,000. And so, um, it replaces that, those two items. Um, plus then we're also replacing our agent hardware debt that, um, we currently have. With this process, we actually increased our storage limits so that way we could, we have a lot of. Other storage devices here. I'm not going to say what for sure, but, um, we're going to consolidate some of that too. So. Well, we're well past it. Um, normally.
I just mean for like this new one, how long would you anticipate a new system would last?
We normally would say six years. Um, and we, we definitely, you know, we tried to do this back in, when COVID was here. Uh, we tried to use some of those COVID dollars for that, uh, but was not able to do that. Um, so, uh, we limped along until now and we, now we're at the point where we can't upgrade our VMware. Anymore than we have because our servers are too old. Our net apps, which is our storage are too old to go to the next levels too. So we're kind of stuck. And with, you know, with security flaws and everything else, um, we, you, you, we're kind of forced to do something different. This system seems to be easier to manage, which is one, nothing we was looking at too, was something a little bit easier for our team to manage. And, and to understand. So, and for us doing updates and all that kind of stuff to keep things up. And so that's the reason why we, we went with this.
Any other questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Supervisors, my name is Joe Hanson, System Administrator for Webster County IT Department. I work under Andy here and, uh, I just want to say he's done a great job of. Uh, getting narrowing down what products, there's been, we went through about five or six products.
We did.
In about four months and a lot of conversations, a lot of demos, a lot of tests and. Uh, doing a couple of test servers to see how things are going. And I, I just can't say thank you enough to Andy and all his research and. And the direction that we're headed, I think is awesome because we're going down from eight servers down to three servers. We'll have less footprint and less licenses down the road. So I think going with what we're going with now is going to save us a hundred thousand plus for the future. So. I just want to come up here and say a few words and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board or from the room? Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next I would seek to approve and allow the chair to sign. A curial service agreement between Hub International, Great Plains and Webster County for fiscal year 2026, completion of G A S B 75.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Uh, questions or comments?
Shawna Abrams, um, what this is for is, um, for the financial director and myself, they help us fill out a form and has to be submitted every two years. And so we are just kind of getting ahead of the game here because we're both kind of new. And so we're just trying to move things forward with this company and get it done before it's really due.
Is it truly due?
What's that?
I mean, would it regularly, usually be due?
Um, is it in 26? So we're trying to get stuff started. So we're not at the end.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item 12, uh, next would be to approve a maintenance upgrade elevator in DHS building. ADA compliant located at 331 First Avenue North, Fort Dodge, Iowa, 330 First Avenue North. Fort Dodge, Iowa, 50501, not to exceed $20,000.
Here, I'll move item number 12.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second. Questions or comments?
We've been having some issues with the elevator over at the DHS building. The, um, the guts need to be replaced. I'm trying to get the best bang out of the buck, whether we're going to. Actually go forward with this or if we're going to have to be making some other changes. So I've got. Other companies coming in to look at it, but as soon as I get the lowest bid out of it, I will get after it because I have been. Being talked to about not being ADA compliant right now. At this very moment, the elevator is running. But I'm not sure how long that's going to last. So we'll stay after and get it fixed.
So you say you're getting a couple of quotes. I know we've talked in previous meeting before, you know, you're getting some quotes that.
Right. I'm trying to get the best bang out of the buck and trying to figure out whether it's going to be worth. If I can get by or if we're going to maybe even have to discuss a replacement over there, but that's what I'm trying to figure out right now. So, but no matter what happens, I gotta get us compliant. So. If that's where we end up at is having to replace that and it gets us by for a couple of years, then that's what we'll do. But. I'll make sure you guys are all informed on what I'm doing before I push the envelope on it, but we definitely got to get after it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next I would seek to approve resolution 2025-36 to designate. Voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties.
I'll move. Item number 13.
Backing in.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? So for those, that'll be, these are the voting members that, uh, get logged in with, uh, the Iowa State Association of Counties, that's who. Association that helps represent the, you know, the local governments. Uh, they do a tremendous job. We just hosted them here, uh, last week. Um, fantastic conversations. So. Any other questions or comments with that? Okay. So this is a roll call vote.
So do I.
Cochran, aye.
I, I let it be known that, uh, passed with unanimous approval. Uh, item number 14, uh, approve and authorize amending a motion from the sixth re-2025, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting. Correcting the transfer amount from 744,875 dollars to 425,851 dollars accrued to fiscal year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Questions or comments?
Um, I just want to, Shawna Abrams here, um, it's just from a correction that we made in June. So we just had, we had to let everybody know we did it.
Yeah, I, I was consulted about it. There's a scribner's error as to what amount was left in which account. Uh, so we maxed that out, I believe. And then the rest had to be pulled from another account that had a surplus. Uh, but the initial action needed to be amended to reflect that we'd liquidated one account and had to pull from another. But still all within that FY.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item 15, approve and authorize the chair to sign ICGI site certification. A supplemental agreement request, $41,200, uh, Wade Greiman and Associates Snyder, with Snyder and Associates. I'm going to get it right one of these times. Incorporated would like to address the board on this matter.
Good morning, Supervisors. Wade Greiman with Snyder and Associates. I want to thank you for. The opportunity to answer any questions that you may have related to our contract amendment. It, uh, is entirely related to. Development being development. Um, things change over time and we had completed. I would say probably 95% of the work from our prior base agreement a couple of years ago, changes with the state legislature, changes with, uh, perspective developments. Have, uh, required the changing of the footprint for the site certification. I believe we're going to be talking about that later here this, this morning too. Uh, under Jefferson, but, um, most of this work is related directly to the survey. And some of the environmental things that we, over time, would need to retouch and reinvestigate with eyes on the, on the, in the field. Just to make sure that things haven't changed. So wetlands and so forth and so on. So. That is basically the bulk of this contract amendment. And in good faith, we have already started much of this work because the deadline for application is August 29th. A document is about that thick. So we didn't want to wait, uh, to Shawna's point earlier, we didn't want to wait till the last minute. Uh, we wanted to get out in front of this. So. The primary reason for the timing of this is to, because of the changes that we've encompassed so far. We needed to get a good idea of what that footprint looks like. And even as recent as the last couple of weeks. Uh, that footprint has changed. Uh, so, and we can talk about that later this morning too, but, uh, I'd, I'd be open to entertaining any questions or comments that you have related to the contract amendment. And again, thank you for the opportunity to work with the county.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, all those in favors.
I'll make the motion to approve item 15.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor, though.
I am trying to avoid it.
I knew at this, this spot. So, thank you. Uh, motion in a second. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next would be the citizens' opportunity to address the board with items not on the agenda. Uh, first we'd ask the North Central Opioid Task Force, uh, recognition of National Overdose Awareness Day. And I do have, hold up. Yes, I'll start by reading our, our Awareness Day proclamation. So International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation. Uh, State of Iowa, Webster County, Board of Supervisors, whereas the North Central Iowa Opioid Task Force continues to support the annual International Overdose Awareness Day campaign. To promote ending the overdose crisis, which not only shatters families and friends, it also fractures our communities and. Whereas the losses go deeper than one person, one family or one neighborhood, it ripples out into classrooms, workplaces and spaces we all share. It crosses borders between cities, states, uh, and nations. And whereas we remember those who have lost, uh, to an overdose, acknowledge the grief. Of family, of the family, friends and community left behind. And whereas the theme for 2025 is one big family driven by hope. We inspire for a community driven by hope, love and action. We are one, one big family, not because we share in the pain of loss, but because we share in the ability to be empowered to change what comes next. Therefore, the Webster County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim that August 31st, 2025 is International Overdose Awareness Day in Webster County, Iowa. So we've got some speakers here. If you'd like to introduce yourself and, and, uh, give us kind of an update and.
Deb Brans, Webster County Health Department.
Tia Hartzler, Community and Family Resources.
And we are a few members of the North Central Iowa Task Force. We meet monthly. Um, Supervisor Cochran is on the, uh, coalition as well. We have, um, opportunities to spread the awareness of where we have, for example, unused prescription medication or expired medication can be dropped off at. Year-round facilities here in Webster County, Law Enforcement Center, CBS, Hy-Vee, et cetera. Uh, we have a, um. If the person is not able to get to one of those locations, you can come to the Health Department. We have disposal. It is called Dispose RX. It's a solution that you can put in to your medication bottle with a little bit of water. You shake it up, safely dispose in the waste basket environmentally friendly. And it doesn't get in the hands of the wrong people. So we just wanted to come before you. Thank you for signing the proclamation and just wanted to, uh, it's an annual thing that we just want to keep in connection with. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I appreciate, I know there's a lot of work that, that goes into this that people don't always see. So thank you guys for your efforts with it too. And it's. It definitely is a crisis that, that has faced a lot of families and there's a lot of those that, that we don't know or hear about all the time. So thank you guys for your work with this.
Thank you.
So aren't we doing an event for this, like on the 28th?
Correct. We are, it, we are, uh, getting the final, um, final, um, goodness.
We're working on the final agenda and getting everything all sealed up.
It is on Thursday, August 30th, or 28th, uh, from 5 to 7 at the city square. Just, uh, there is, um. Some turnover at CFR. So we're trying to get just the final, uh, countdown of it, but it is in the works and we will have on again, Thursday, August 20th and 5 to 7 at the city square. So thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
What's the event called?
It is called Overdose Awareness Day. And it actually, it's on the, the 31st, but since it is on a Sunday, we're having it, uh, on a Thursday evening from 5 to 7. So it's just having speakers. Uh, there's going to be food trucks for people to be able to purchase food. Um, just a community, um, event with some tabling and getting the resources out there and just coming together and. And, uh, getting together and seeing what we can do to continue to keep on keeping on.
Good deal. Well, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get a signed copy and. Get it with you guys too. So. Uh, any other, uh, business? Uh, the citizens' opportunity to address the board items not on our agenda. Anybody else like to speak? But please just state your name and where you're from and.
Good morning. Uh, Scott Cusser. I'm presently on the council with, uh, Harcourt. Uh, I'm here to kind of give my opinion and some stuff on the essential services for EMS. Uh, to give you a little of my background, I've been 50 years in public safety, started in 1975 in law enforcement, Minnesota. 89, I moved to Iowa and got involved in fire and EMS. 2007, took a position with Iowa Central as the Fire Science Coordinator and Instructor. I also in 2010. Got involved with the Fire Service Training Bureau in training firefighters. Uh, and then we have since moved over to DPS. So I am a training specialist now with the DPS, Department of Public Safety. I was here for the meeting for the essential services, the last one you had. And there was, uh, I believe it was brought to you guys, the recommendation. That all transport, non-transport services, we're going to receive $10,000 check. And then the transport services, which are Gowry, Farnerville, Stratford, Dayton and Fort Dodge Fire, we're going to get. A set amount. And my feeling is that should not just go out as an all-time check to the people. Uh, I know in Harcourt, uh, it costs $7,000 to run their EMS. Uh, I know in Harcourt, uh, it costs $7,000 to run their EMS as far as expenses, wages, training. And that comes out of their fire budget right now. Moreland and Claire do not have any first responders or EMTs. And my understanding when this passed was that every community would have trained personnel that could provide emergency services, medical services right away. That's the key thing when you talk about emergency services is that first call, who's gonna respond? Great, I live in Harcourt, we do have EMTs. Uh, but Gowry's the responding service for basic life support. All they have is EMTs. When are they gonna get there? You know, road conditions, they're six miles away. If there's road construction, is it gonna delay it? So that first call, if we can get EMTs or first emergency responders there to give medical care right away before a transport service shows up. The other concern is that was brought up, calendar needs a Lucas machine, which is an automated machine to provide CPR. Well, that's $17,000. So do they have to wait two years to get their two checks of $10,000 to buy a Lucas machine? My feeling is we need to, and has anybody approached you with a needs assessment for the towns in Webster County as far as EMS services?
So we have, like, so they, the committee got formed, uh, it was a year and a half ago. Um, that was one of the things they were tasked with, was trying to understand where our needs were. Um, and then they put together their recommendations. Um, and then we ended up with that workshop. Now that it's passed the vote from March of how do we do, you know, how do we handle dispersments and things like that? So that's what we're trying to work through that.
Yeah.
Um, and that is, you know, like a needs assessment is something that uh, we have talked a lot about. And that, you know, we'll have to continue throughout the duration because this, you know, runs for 15 years. Um, so we, you know, it is recognized that we're gonna constantly have to be looking at that. So, I mean, as far as like, you know, I don't believe there's been like an official, other than what they have presented so far. You know, I don't know if there's like an official form or I guess of anything like that that would say that. But that's what they did through their, you know, our first pass of getting through this was understanding the needs of the county.
So I mean, my number one priority, and when I've talked to these people, they say number one priority is we need manpower and equipment. But then in the second breath, they come up and say, but we don't wanna take money from this pot to do this one because we're gonna run out of money. Well, I think the priority should be Claire and Moreland need trained personnel there. And we need to make sure all non-transport services have their trained personnel and the equipment they need. The transport services have the equipment they need and in their, in their community. And another thing we gotta think about, come the middle of September, Highway 169 is gonna be closed from Fort Dodge to Harcourt. They're redoing it. So now your transport services have a longer transport time. And that's essential in the EMS is that first responding people to get there. I know Gowry has said they're gonna hire a paramedic. Doesn't do Harcourt any good when the paramedics in Gowry. Uh, I understand Fort Dodge wants to build a fire station. Yes, put more personnel on. But that's gonna benefit date, basically the people up in the northern part of the county. But when they tear, it will also benefit down here. But again, they're 17 miles away. And now with Highway 169 closed, how long is it gonna take them to get down to our area or tear with either Gowry or Dayton? So I think, uh, I don't believe in just handing a check to any of the non-transport services or the transport services for the amount they want. I think they need to look at, you know, what happens if they don't respond to calls? They've gotten that check. You know, are they getting paid for not responding? I think that needs to be looked at, break it down into how much they do and what their expenses are. And I don't know if anybody has contacted Iowa Central on training. Uh, they have EMS providers and training. So again, that's my concern with this whole thing is you're gonna get a pot of money. And everybody wants their share of it, but it's beginning. This is new in Iowa. The essential services, as far as fire, it's state code that you have to provide fire protection. So there's things set up. But as far as the essential services for EMS, this is all new territory. So, and again, you gotta sustain it over the years. And there's certain needs, equipment, training, and everything else. I think to send somebody through for EMT at Iowa Central now is around $2,200. You know, where's that money gonna come from? Or can we provide training for these smaller communities?
And I appreciate, and that's, you know, the, you know, getting it, pal, you said it is relatively new. What was it, two years ago, the, the bill passed to, to allow us to, to take a vote on this? And when it comes to, you know, post vote, if you will, like how does dispersments work and things like that? I mean, that's everybody, you know, everybody's a little bit unique. Every county's a little bit different. You know, we're, we're seeing that same thing here. Um, and fortunately, you know, we've got a great group of folks that are trying to all put our heads together to figure out the best way to make this work. Uh, so those conversations are ongoing and we're, they're continuing, you know, um, as we try to, to sort through what that looks like, you know, I've been talking to Darren quite a bit. Um, our county attorney, um, working with the agencies, you know, we've had a lot of conversations and they'll continue to have conversations. So I, it's, you know, we're still trying to sort it out. We don't have the money sitting in the bank yet. So we've got a little time to try to work that out. So we're gonna continue to work on that. Um, and as far as reaching out to Iowa Central, um, I actually, as of a couple of weeks ago, I'm sitting on the, the Iowa Central EMS Advisory Committee, um, for their EMS programs out there. So, um, I got fortunate enough to be asked to, to sit on that committee to represent us. Um, just kinda have a, a different perspective on there, uh, from their, the EMS department. And given where I'm at and the needs and what's going on in Webster County, they felt it important to try to get, get somebody in there that kinda understands it. So that, those are conversations that will continue to happen and they'll evolve as we understand the ins and outs, the dos and don'ts, to make sure that, you know, we have transparency, we have the things that we need. So those are, are continuing to be ongoing.
Okay, yeah, because my concern is you just don't go, don't turn out and say, here, everybody have this check, you know, like, yeah, they want the money. It'd be great because your volunteer services, they gotta do their pancake breakfast or fundraisers because they don't have the budget to even operate under for fire protection. So.
And those are public meetings. I'm not sure when the next EMS advisory meeting is. I'd have to look it up. I can, I can get, get you the next meeting if you'd like to, to show up and talk in that meeting. I'd have, I, I'm not sure the date on that one exactly, but I can get, happy to get that for you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a, it's gotta be a group, but everybody's gotta be open and communicate with everybody.
Yep.
Uh, I've had some things that uh, were said by some of the transport services. We did all the work. We're gonna throw it at supervisors. If they don't like it, they can take it over. And I'm looking at them and I say, this isn't the way to do this. You know, you gotta work together.
No, and I, and I think we see that. I mean, it's, it's always just trying to, you know, when you get something that's new, it's always trying to work through that. So I know at least the conversations I've had with folks, transporting and non-transporting, you know, we've had good fruitful conversations so that we all kinda get on the same page and know what we need and.
Sure.
So I, I, I think it's just a matter of working out logistically how that all works out. So.
Yep, I agree. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, any other uh, items come before the board that we're not on the agenda that anybody would like to talk about? Anything from the table at all? Alright. Well, thank you, everybody. So next, uh, Board of Supervisors Committee reports.
Nothing at this time.
I haven't done anything in the last two weeks and I will be at the opioid meeting on the 21st. And today is my daughter's birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'll keep it short, I can report today.
So last week I had our city-county uh, Growth Alliance meeting. Uh, wonderful conversations with Growth Alliance, uh, and our partners in the city. Uh, and help kinda keep those conversations going. Uh, really great meeting that we had. Uh, the only other thing I've got is I've got a opioid meeting coming up tomorrow, uh, tomorrow afternoon. Um, so look forward to sitting down with you folks again, uh, like we do. Uh, but nothing else to report from me at this time. So with that being said, next I would seek a motion to allow claims. Motion in a second. Any questions or comments on claims? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carries. Uh, next I would seek a motion to meeting closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate in accordance with Iowa Code Section 21.5 Sub 1 Sub J. Okay.
I'll make the motion we meet in closed session.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? This is roll call vote.
Vote aye.
Cochran aye.
Montgomery aye.
Aye, guy, let the record reflect that it was unanimous from the board. We will now be moving into closed session.
...
All right, so now we are back into our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other final questions or comments before we adjourn? All those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.